And good evening, welcome to the Holliston School Committee's Thursday, June 3rd, 2021 School Committee Meeting. It is 8:13, I am calling this open session now to order as we are returning from executive session. All members, with the exception of Mrs. Listevnik, are present this evening. This evening, we don't have any meeting minutes to approve, so we're going to jump right into oral communication. So this evening is our first meeting after the election. So while the school year is ending and it sounds, you know, it feels like things are coming to a close, the school committee literally is sort of starting anew, if you will. And so my mantra has been this week, it's time to recover, reset, and renew. And I think we will achieve that. I would like to warmly welcome Minnie Gupta and Amanda Bigelow, who have been elected to the committee, and Lisa Koshin, who has been re-elected to the committee. And I'm going to give you to an opportunity to introduce yourselves as we go through and offer up our individual comments. I'll give you the signal for that. The first piece of business to share is a huge congratulations to all of the seniors who were presented with their awards at Senior Awards Night last night. It was held virtually, and if it's permissible, I'm hoping Dr. Cusco will include the link to the recording in her weekly update. And a huge thank you to the community, all the businesses, the organizations, the personal and private donations, if you will. Last night, over $165,000 was given to our senior class in scholarships and awards. And finally, just a huge congratulations to the class of 2021, and we will all be celebrating, possibly squelching with you on Sunday out at Committee and Field. So congratulations to the class. And with that, Amanda, you happen to be right next to me, so I will move to you for individual comment.
To introduce myself? Okay. Well, thank you, Stacy, and thank you to the other members of the committee for being so gracious in welcoming us here to the committee. I'm really excited to be here. Thank you, everyone, for your participation in the election. I hope to really be able to serve the community in a lot of positive ways during my tenure on the school committee, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Dawn, do you have anything for individual comment tonight?
I do. I just wanted to say that the high school students are working on a combination theater band chorus concert, and that is scheduled for June 10th, and it's going to be outside on the football field. So keep a lookout for that. That is next Thursday evening.
Catherine, you're next on my screen. Do you have anything tonight?
I don't, not tonight.
Lisa?
Yeah, I just want to give a quick little blurb for Holliston Pride. I think this went out to everybody. The diverse Holliston has helped organize a whole bunch of events, and I'll just mention a couple of them because I know that this went out to everybody. I think Dr. Cusco sent this out to everyone. But there's a pride celebration and book signing at Aesop's Fable on Saturday, June 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. A pride picnic at Pleasure Point on Saturday, June 12th at 4:00 p.m. And there are a couple of other events, too. It looks like for more, for the full details, you'd have to see either the email you received or the diverse Holliston Facebook page. So just wanted to give a little quick shout out to them. That's all.
Great. Minnie?
Sorry, my bad. So hi, everyone. We did have a meeting on Tuesday, so I said hello to everyone, but I wanted to take the time to thank everyone who participated in the elections, and I really look forward to everyone. It's been a very, it's been, it's been really awesome knowing all the committee members and as well as everyone else on the administration and especially Dr. Cusco and Keith and Peter. And I really look forward to serving as a committee member for the next three years.
And we are glad to have you all and Lisa back. Thank you, Minnie. Susan, Keith, Peter, anyone have anything to share?
I do have a couple of things. I'm very excited to announce that a decision was made on the Assistant Superintendent for Kirk Common Instruction. And pending contract negotiations, we will be welcoming Joni Menard to the district as our new Assistant Superintendent. So she's very excited to join us. I'll be meeting with her tomorrow, and we'll go from there and hopefully I'll have an update to finalize that shortly. And then I did want to, there was a question asked about Juneteenth and other some events that are going on in the buildings, and there are a variety of things going on. There's a book, and I'm trying to pull up the name of it here. There's a book that is being done with the younger students, and it really focuses on, first, it's called The First Day of Freedom by Angela Johnson. So that book will be shared with students as well as a video. And I think it's 3K to 5 is going to be doing that. And then there are some activities being done at the older levels as well during morning announcements, the GSA, the Great State Alliance, doing announcements every day, and they're having activities with the pride flags. I think you all maybe have noticed when you've been drawing up to the schools, all four buildings do have pride flags in the building, so we're really trying to support all of our students with that work. This week, the high school actually flew the flag, and then as Juneteenth approaches, they'll be doing more activities around that as well to try to fit all of this in before the end of the year. So lots, lots still happening. I was in Miller and the middle school today, and things are very, very, very busy in the buildings. They're just finishing up MCAS, so that has been, as you can imagine, very jam-packed and getting that information sent out to Desi. As of right now, it's not clear whether Desi is reconsidering, the commissioner of education has said he will still consider whether or not they will be embargoing the MCAS results and using them for planning purposes for school districts and the state, or whether they'll be going out to parents, we'll know more, but probably by the end of the year on that, and I'll update you if that changes in any way. Right now, the results will be coming to us and will be shared out. They just won't have the same impact as they would in a typical year if that's not COVID. And I'm very excited about graduation on Sunday, and I do hope that the heat holds off a little bit.
Agreed. Peter, do you have anything tonight?
All set, thank you.
Okay, great. Lisa?
Sorry, correction. I was talking about diverse Holliston and Holliston Pride, and that's because I see the names associated with Holliston Pride are several of the same names associated with diverse Holliston, but it's actually a separate group. Holla Pride is, has coordinated and organized the events for Holliston Pride. So just a little correction. That's all, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. This evening, we have two registrants for public comment. Mr. Bude, could you do the phone call first, please?
Certainly, the phone call's in the room now. If you can unmute yourself and identify yourself and provide your address.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, good evening all. My name is Carrie Marsh, and I live at 182 Highland Street in Holliston. I have three children in the public school system here. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have a very brief question. As someone that follows each school committee meeting, could you please share with the public where we are at with the teacher contracts? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carrie. And traditionally, the school committee, we listen to public comment. We don't actually respond to questions unless they're on the agenda. I will just share with you briefly, because it's come up a couple of times, that the school committee is currently in mediation, which is moving towards fact-finding with the Holliston Federation of Teachers, and we are optimistic and very hopeful that we will come to an agreement for many reasons by the end of the month. And as soon as we have more information to share, we absolutely will do so. So thank you for that question. Okay. And this evening, we brought back an oldie but goodie. Anne Louise, you wanted to speak for a couple of minutes?
Okay, wait, an oldie?
An oldie but goodie. And by the way, so hard not to be as old.
It's okay. Thank you, and thank you for letting me come back to do this. I, you know, when I was looking at the calendar, I thought my last meeting was going to be the night before my daughter graduated, not realizing that Baccalaurate was going to happen, and it was just, it was complicated, so I couldn't do it. So I apologize for those of you that haven't been through this before. Usually, when a committee member steps down after a number of years, there's a little goodbye, not always, but, but I just wanted that chance. Nine years is a long time, so I wanted to say something to each of you and to the community. And it's really hard to believe that nine years has passed, so forgive me, I do have some notes, and Stacy, just, just bear with me, I'll try to get through this as fast as I can. It's nine years ago that I drove up the street, and I had a question for Erica Plunkett, who was chair at the time, and like so many of us, there's some, some burning question or some particular issue that drives you to think, okay, what, you know, maybe I'll run for school committee, but in that moment, it was Erica, after chatting, who said, gee, why don't you think about this? So I really owe that to her for launching me into what has been an amazing experience. And it's a little bit like parenting, right? A labor of love, unpredictable at every turn, challenging in ways you cannot fathom, especially this past year. But because of that, all the more rewarding. So to Minnie and Amanda and even Catherine, your journey is beginning, and there is so much more ahead of you, and when it's over, you're going to be exhausted, but you're going to look back and say, that was worth it. And the truth is, I'm not sure I had a full understanding of what I was getting into, so, and that's so often true, right, of the best experiences that you have. I remember sitting on my first, in my first election day, on my first election day, in the rain, under a tent, which wasn't really doing the trick, with Kathy Penny Packer, who I didn't know at the time. And when you spend nine hours in the rain under a tent with somebody, you get to know them pretty well. But more than that, I made a close friend, and I learned so much about what I was about to encounter from Kathy, and she was my guidepost, a sounding board, and always a voice of reason and always a shoulder. So Kathy, I love you. I hope we stay friends forever. What a difference you made. The year I joined also marked a transition from one longstanding committee to another, and so I just want to offer my sincere thanks to a few, a few of the folks on that prior committee, in addition to Erica, who I've mentioned. Lisa Gallegos, you, day one, pulled me onto the Budget Subcommittee. I'm not sure that's something I really wanted, but it happened. And it was, it was really an amazing experience. You showed me the ropes, you taught me what I needed to know, and I'm so indebted to you for your support and encouragement. You are the picture of grace, and even after leaving the committee, you were always there for a tough question, and I so appreciated that. A big shout out to Ginny Murphy, Donald Gray, and of course, Carol Emmons. Carol, you were my bridge. You were that one committee member from the past who stuck it out for at least one more term into the future, and, or maybe it was two. And, and so I just want you to know how deeply indebted I am to you. Your insight, your kindness are measurable. You're possibly the most unflappable person I have ever met, and that was really valuable on school committee, really valuable. And most of all, thank you for creating policy on maintaining small class sizes before stepping down. I feel like that should be called the Carol Emmons Class Size Policy. It made a difference. It reminds us constantly that our students deserve the attention that they need one-on-one in that classroom, and it's hard to do when the class sizes get too big. To the friends I made on the new and emerging committee, which is so many of you, this has been, as I said, an amazing experience. Joan Shaughnessy, what can I say other than I miss you? I miss your wisdom, your sound judgment on budget and other topics, and always your pithy Irish sayings, which just so captured the moment when they were needed. Stacy and Cynthia, I hold you among my friends. I consider you guys, you know, that, that part of the committee in the beginning, when we were kind of all in it together, and I've always deeply appreciated that. I know we haven't always quite seen eye to eye, but I've never once doubted your dedication and commitment to the schools and to the community. And at the end of the day, when you think about what public service is all about, that's really all we can ever ask for. So thank you for that. The community owes you a great debt of gratitude as well. Excuse me, I of course got sick, and it's not COVID, but people are running for the hills every time I step outside. Let's see. Andy Morton, you're not here tonight. I know you'd have a nice little statement as well, but again, what can I say? You always provided the perfect balance when we needed it. Thank you for always making the effort to join yet another Budget Subcommittee meeting. You always gave us that insight and perspective, and having a teacher's point of view has always been so valuable, because sometimes we just need to see the world through the teacher's eyes, and you were able to help us do that, so thank you for that. Lisa Koshin, you've served at my side now, I think, six of the, six of the nine years, partly on budget for these past several years, and I just, I don't know what to say. You are such an extraordinary individual. You have this unique and innate ability to be open-minded and to consider things well beyond your own personal perspective, point of view, or agenda. The number of times I've seen you advocate for support or help or what have you at the high school when your child was a third grader was, was always amazing to me that you could truly step out of your shoes and do that, and that you were really there for all of our students, and that's, that's enormous. And God love you for taking on the newsletter. You do a great job. And, oh my goodness, no one else really wants to, so thank you for that. And thank you just for your support, especially in these past months when my life has just been a little topsy-turvy. You'll never know how much I appreciated it. I'm getting through this, sorry. Dawn, when you joined the committee, I felt like we had added another star athlete to the team. Your professionalism, your poise, calm demeanor, willingness to research literally anything and come up with like statutes and data and God knows what. It just shows that you're not only a quick study, but you're a thorough study, and you get the job done, and I don't know how you do it. I mean, five kids, a legal career, and school committee, it's amazing. You just never cease to amaze me, so thank you for just giving that much more of yourself to the community and to all of us. You are special. Catherine, it's hard to believe, I'm not sure we've ever met in person. You are my Zoom buddy, and, and I, probably one of my greatest regrets is that we really haven't really had that time, but doesn't mean we can't. So I really look forward to getting to know you better from the outside looking in. As an educator and health professional, you brought a fresh and needed perspective to the table, and so for that, I, I'm grateful. It's, it's been a delight getting to know you through Zoom at least. With all of you, I've shared late nights, hours of subcommittee meetings, weeks at the MASCE conferences, many days on the Hill advocating for one thing or another. And through it all, I think, as all of you know, what amazed me is that we showed up as a group of seven. Like, we were like an amoeba that went to the day on the Hill, we went to the state conferences, and other committees might send one, maybe two representatives, if they were lucky, three, but we were there in force. And through that all comes, comes a lot of knowledge and collaboration and friendship again. Keep that up, do it with everybody. When you're down on Cape Cod at the next conference, give me a ring, I'll come over for Friday night dinner. So I look forward to that and hope it can still happen. Lastly, Amanda and Minnie, I was so delighted to learn that each of you would be running for school committee. I want to congratulate you on earning your seats at the table. My only regret is that I won't have the opportunity to serve at your side, but you are amazing, and gosh, the community knew it, and they voted you in, and I couldn't be more thrilled for you. Keith, you got to look up. You are the one constant. You are like the North Star guiding the district, never seeking praise or attention for any of your own individual contributions, and they are many. It's always extraordinary to see what you are able to get done. I have no idea where anything is in that office of yours, but I know there is a method to your madness. And as a result, most in our community don't know, but, but you, you are a hero. You are a hero in this district. You make things happen with literally no resources at times. And so for that, you have my admiration, my gratitude, as does everybody in central office. I can't go through everybody's names, but, but Keith, in that regard, you stand out, and if I were there, I'd give you a hug or a six-pack of beer or something. So thank you. Susan, I would be remiss if I didn't say how utterly delighted I was the day that we brought you on board. You have been a trooper. Your work ethic is second to none. It's extraordinary that you were able to step in, literally, I think, three days after we gave you the offer, and just hit the road running. There was a steep learning curve in the middle of a pandemic, and it's a new district. I'm, I'm just so very grateful, your communications style, your willingness to hear parents. It's so critical to building a rapport and trust that the leadership in the district has it. You, you've got their backs, and I think we are in good stead, and I know there's still some rocky roads ahead with reopening schools, et cetera, but I have great faith in your leadership, and I want to thank you for all that you've done this year. And Peter, did, did you, there you are, Peter. Peter, you and I are on our swan song. You've contributed an immense amount to this district, and I want to thank you for that. I know that it's always hard to, you know, transition from one chapter in your life to another, but know that you go with a lot of love and appreciation from not only your colleagues, but from this committee. I will be bold and say that on their behalf, but certainly personally. So thank you for everything, and I wish you well. Sharon will be better off for having you. And importantly, to our administration and especially to our teachers, I want to say something that I know you so desperately need to hear. You are valued. Just give me a minute. I know that so many of you, I know so many of you personally, and I am in awe of all that you do. And forever grateful for all that you do for our students and that you have done for my own personal children. I had so hoped last year when Mary graduated to be able to say goodbye to many of you and to thank you for what has been an amazing experience for our family. Collectively, you have dedicated nearly 50,000 hours of your lives educating just my three And what you accomplished this past year was nothing short of miraculous. You stepped into the classroom masked and shielded. You accommodated in-school learning, hybrid learning, full remote, requiring many layers of planning. Some of you stepped into roles that weren't your typical roles, teaching disciplines that were brand new. And for that, you deserve our gratitude and the gratitude of everyone in this community. Know that you have mine. And if it were as simple as writing you a check personally, I would do that. But I am optimistic and hopeful that we will find a way to acknowledge your contributions in a way that makes a difference for you. And so I hope that happens soon, I truly do. And I guess that brings me to my final thoughts here. Several years ago, I think it was at a breakfast, maybe one of you will remember, with some of our state legislators and representatives, we were given a history lesson on education in the Commonwealth. And one of the representatives talked about the word cherish, as it was written into either an early doctrine or piece of legislation, about public education and the importance of it. And the word cherish meant something very different in the late 1700s and early 1800s than it means now, and quite literally means to invest, not just to care for something and hold it in high esteem, but to invest in something to ensure that the thing that you care about is cherished financially. Holliston has always demanded excellence in education. As a community, we have again and again stood behind our public schools and held them up as priority to ensure that the youth of our community are prepared to enter the world as productive citizens with skills that not only help them manage their lives as individuals, but with values that contribute to a stronger society. We are at a critical juncture. There are many choices, difficult choices, that we face as a community over the coming years in how to manage our priorities, and they should be based on the values of everyone in the community. But if I do nothing else, then I want to offer these few thoughts in my parting message. We must cherish our teachers, and that means investing in them. We have to find a path forward to settle this contract in a way that is good for both We must cherish our instructional facilities. Please continue to further the possibility of getting state support for rebuilding our high school. The aging structure is an impediment to educating students in the 21st century, not to mention immensely inefficient by any sustainability or energy standards. I know that project comes, you know, at a time when we're considering many, many other investments in the community, but please don't lose sight of that need. We must cherish our students by continuing to invest in innovative programs and instruction. Please continue to support our world languages, French immersion in particular, and Montessori programs. They are the hallmark of what makes Holliston unique, but they don't have to be the end either. There may be other innovative programs we can put in place, but let's not lose sight of what makes us special and put some, something into those programs moving forward to keep them going. And finally, we must cherish our students and give them voice. There is nothing more important in our society than choice and voice, and our students deserve an opportunity to provide that input and feedback on their education. So please, implement the student feedback program that was agreed upon now three years ago. I have enormous faith in all of you, which makes it easy to pass the baton, except that I'm still coming back for cocktails. I now get to watch from a distance, maybe with a glass of wine, and I wish you well, each and every one of you. Holliston, you are in good hands with this school committee. I'd say an Irish blessing, but I'll leave that one to Joan. So to all of you, thank you, and thank you for your patience in letting me get through that.
Thank you, Anne Louise, and as we shared a couple of weeks ago,
we will have an in-person thank you and farewell to you and Andy when at a future date, probably next fall. So thank you for your service to our committee and to our community. We, you know, great job. It's been a long haul. That's why I called you an oldie but goodie.
Daisy, can I say something really quick? I promise I won't take more than a minute.
Yep.
Just as one of the people who's worked the longest and the most closely with Ann Louise that's actually here tonight, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your years of service. And I learned, as I've told you before, I have learned so much from you. You asked just some really brilliant questions along the way that really made me think. And to say that I learned a lot from you on budget is quite the understatement. I had no idea what I was getting into when I started on that committee, and everything that I've learned is due to you, with help from Keith, for sure, and and Daniel and and Ken. But you were the person who was always guiding me and shepherding me and answering my my endless questions, and I can't thank you enough for all of that. But much bigger than that, I've just learned so much about calmness under pressure and poise and grace. And I wish sometimes I could channel your calmness. No one's ever going to accuse me of of being the calm in the storm, but but I do. I do think that I I have learned how to to be, at least stay a little bit more neutral when there are, you know, attacks coming at us, thanks to the example that you've set. And just working with you on all the various communications and and strategy issues and even, you know, the nitty gritty politics, I've I'm indebted to you. And more than that, enjoyed working with you, enjoyed getting to know you, and know that, you know, this is hardly the end of our friendship. I will be calling you all the time for advice and support. But we'll toast you and roast you much better in person when we get there. But I just wanted to say something as probably the person who's who's worked the most closely with you in recent years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Louise. Good to see you. Now go enjoy your free time. Go have a glass of wine, because some of us cannot do that.
Exactly. All right, guys. Take care.
Good night. All right, and we will jump right into our reports from subcommittees. I'm going to start with Dawn. Dawn and Cynthia are the two members who are on superintendent's evaluation. So Dawn, you want to give us an update?
Yes, so Andy was also on it. He was the chair of that. We are we are collecting from him some of the feedback that was previously provided. So if you did not finish it, please get it in. I'll be sending out reminders in the next week, and then Cynthia and I are scheduling a meeting for the week of, I believe, June 18th. So to start pulling that together, and then we'll reach out to Susan and set up some meeting times as well.
Do you have a definitive date? I need deadlines for when you want the feedback.
Yes, so the deadline is June 17th.
For us to fill out the form that Andy sent via Google, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does everybody has to fill it or like the members who are already there? Do we also have to fill it?
You know. You don't have to. I think I would say this. You're day two on the committee. If you have feedback that you want to share based on the goals that Susan shared with us, by all means, but I guess I would say don't feel that it's a requirement. We'll get you next year for sure. Dawn, anything else on that?
Nope, that's all great.
Thank you. Budget, subcommittee, it's in your packet for items of information. All of the meeting minutes are there as an FYI. Dawn or Catherine, do you have another policy meeting scheduled for this month?
Working on it.
Okay, okay, great. And Lisa, anything for communications?
No, but we should have one wrap-up meeting or I'll have to think about that. No, nothing scheduled yet.
All righty. And with that, we're going to jump back to old business, and I can't wait till we can change this COVID update. Susan?
The only recent update I have is related to contact tracing. We just got something, and I don't even have it in front of me, but we got something from the commissioner's office today that outside, we will not have to do contact tracing related to outside behaviors in schools. That was the one change. Everything else remains in place from previous conversations.
And Susan, will the nurses update the COVID dashboard and the FAQs on that?
I'm sure they will. I sent that to them today, so I'm sure they'll be on top of that.
Dawn? I had seen your message, Susan, about discontinuing the COVID testing at the high school, and I completely lost a grade of students. And I just also wanted to add, I know Chief Cassidy updates us each week and then also posts it online. But I was so happy to see that as of his posting this evening, in the 12 to 15-year-old demographic, 71% have had at least one COVID vaccine. And I believe he had posted that something close to 100% of the group of 16 to 19-year-olds have had one COVID vaccine. So we're really making progress here. So I can understand why we would discontinue the COVID testing at the high school. Could we get, are we still continuing to test at the lower schools where where the vaccine isn't yet available at Miller or Placentino? What does the turnout on that look like?
They are still continuing every Tuesday to test at the other buildings, and we're anywhere from 30 to 40%, depending on grade level. I think the highest is 42%, and that might be grade five, but don't quote me on that. You know, I don't think it was a magic grade three. But we still have never had really strong numbers, but I feel like there's enough to at least keep that going. And possibly if the numbers decrease at the middle school because of that, what you're just sharing, which I hadn't had a chance to read yet, that maybe they wouldn't continue. But we're only talking a couple of weeks, so I don't think we're going to stop anything else at this point. We just had so few kids at the high school even prior to the vaccine being in their hands. And that really was just, I think the numbers were well below 100 of students that weren't even getting it at all.
And I guess this also falls into COVID update, but how COVID affects graduation. Has there been any additional guidance? Are we allowed to have a procession of students outside for graduation? Is that part of it? Are we just trying to understand, is that part of the guidance that we shouldn't have that due to COVID? Or is that something that we could consider?
I would add to Dawn's question there. As a, so I have a high school graduate C E L, like, you know, graduating this year, and I think procession did mean a lot lot to all of us. At least I know it was an absolutely awesome experience when my older one graduated. So I would love to know that if this is something that, I know it's very last minute, but would it be something that we could consider? It doesn't have to be perfect, but just something that if it is at all possible and feasible at this point.
Yeah, I have not been involved in the planning process for graduation, so I think it's the logistical pieces we were stuck here. I don't know if Keith has any more information on that, but I don't know if that's something that they could just change at this point prior to Saturday, because it's all about the practicing, and I don't even know. When is the practice? Did they already have a practice yet, Keith?
If they're practicing with chairs, I don't know if they have or not. You know, the the outside piece is just something that we're not used to doing, I'll say. I it's we've, as you, I think you all know, graduation is normally inside. I do know one of the concerns is the length of the event as a whole with regards to the weather and the fact of the turf field. I mean, they're predicting temperatures in the 90s. That field that field temperature is going to be 110, 120 degrees, you know, with the sun beating on all day. And I'm sure I'll speak for Nicole here. I don't know this to be true. But I think her concern with if you add a processional into there, you're adding, whatever it takes, another 15 to 20 minutes of people being out on that turf, and it's it's going to be a tough day. I mean, I think we can certainly ask about it. I just don't know if, you know, on on Friday morning, because it wouldn't be Thursday, Thursday night any longer. On Friday morning, if they could turn that around in a fashion, that would both look good and be prepared well, you know, for it. I mean, you know, 200 kids coming, you know, they'd have to set up somewhere else, figure out, you know, there's a lot of things. I will ask them.
There's no rehearsal. There's no rehearsal as far as I know.
So they would have to somehow make that happen, plan a rehearsal and get it done tomorrow. I mean, I don't, I just, we're talking, I don't know.
Ever had a rehearsal? I mean, we've had processionals in the past, and have they always rehearsed walking in? They have.
Yeah, they go through the whole piece of how to walk in, where to walk into, et cetera, et cetera, lefts and rights and that that sort of thing, so.
I mean, we are the school, to your credit, when we were trying to open the doors and you needed volunteers, you pulled them together within just a few days, and we got the doors open. I just want to advocate for the community and 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 say that this is an important part of the graduation. So to to the extent, I mean, it really is symbolic. They are moving in together. They are moving up to the next phase of their life together. The movement together is important to these families, and it is outside. So if there is any way at all to organize this, just please consider. And I'm not saying we need to pull together rehearsal, that we might be able to move these kids in a line into the graduation without a rehearsal.
It's 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 not about that it's outside, it's that it's outside with the heat. That is the concern, I believe. I don't, again, know that to be true, but that would certainly be my concern. So but I will ask, and we can certainly report back to you before Sunday.
And that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Lisa?
Won't belabor the point, but just want to, you know, throw in support for that, too. I think that, I mean, if the heat is an issue, that's different. But I think from a COVID perspective, you know, just the idea of of being outside with so many in that age group already vaccinated, it just seems like it this should be treated like any other year from that perspective.
It's not, it's not COVID. I'll, it's not.
Okay.
It's the kids are in school. So, I mean, they could be wearing masks. It's not, it's not a COVID issue. This is a heat issue, I believe. So again, because we're, it's not that we're trying to get through it as fast as possible. I don't want to give that impression. It's about making sure that we're not having, I mean, last year when it was not as warm, we did have a student suffer, we'll say. And so I don't want to, you know, I'm not trying to overdramatize it, and that's just not my nature. But again, it's going to be hot. I cannot pretend that it's not going to be.
Yeah, I will say I've had multiple, I've been in multiple graduations where I was on the turf field, and it is much, much hotter. The the black underneath the turf just attracts all of that heat, and it's so that 90 degrees turns into 100 degrees very fast as far as the temperature, and it just. So that is definitely a huge worry, and to try to, I'll be honest, I don't know how logistically they would be able to pull that together and get the kids all back tomorrow or Saturday is what we'd be talking about.
I would suggest everybody gets an umbrella, to be very honest. It's, I think we are going to need that.
Susan, any other updates on COVID?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, and hopefully next year we can stop calling it COVID update and some other recovery update. And Keith, do you have any information about transportation adjustments? It's on the agenda, but I actually did not confirm with you earlier. My apologies.
That's okay. Yeah, the 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 plan that we talked about last week with the adjusting of the 10 minutes for the middle school. I spoke with our contractor multiple times on multiple subjects regarding next year's transportation. But with regards to the start times, it's kind of what we view as kind of the safest first step in, you know, not trying to make Placentino later than we need to initially and 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 having a little wiggle room there at the middle school time. So I it would be bumping the middle school time back 10 minutes to start at 8 o'clock rather than 8:10.
Yeah, I, the last time I spoke about it, I had said potentially doing 8:05 for the middle school and then pushing Placentino out. But we talked again, and it was an idea I had talked about before. So I would recommend now putting the middle school at 8 o'clock and the high school at 8:10. So you'd be reducing the high school by five minutes rather than 10, because that the 10 minutes would be adjusting on the middle school, getting them a little more time to get up to the high school. And then that five minutes should, we're hoping that that will offset, so they will get to Placentino in a timely manner. I think that really don't want to mess with the Placentino time at all, especially considering all the concerns we had.
So no change to Miller or Placentino?
Correct.
Correct.
And no, so the only change would be at the middle school.
10 minutes at the middle school and five minutes at the high school. So it'll be five minutes earlier.
I thought you said 8:10 at the high school.
Because right now it's 8:10, right now in a normal year, it would be 8:10 at the middle school and 8:15 at the high school.
No, no, 8:10 at the high school. The same start times.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought they were five minutes apart.
Nope, nope, the same start times.
So the middle schoolers just get there 10 minutes earlier and.
Correct.
So we're not changing the high school, correct?
Right now, that's not our recommendation. I mean, I, where I am on September 15th could be much different, so.
All right, but do we need to vote that for contractual reasons or can we? Okay.
It's not a contractual reason. It's your calendar that you vote, and that's part of the calendar. So at some point, it may be good to vote it, but it's not about contracts. I mean, the start and end times of the of the school day are not part of that, so.
And do we have any understanding of why there's such a bottleneck? And is there something we can do to push that bottleneck? Is it downtown traffic? Is it, do we, I'm, give me.
This year is, this year is a unique year, and you kind of have to, I'm saying, ignore it with the transportation piece, but it can't be what we're basing our decisions on, because this was, again, I I've been here one day short of forever. And, you know, the the fact is, is that, you know, this has been the oddest transportation year for a lot of reasons. So I, you got to throw this one out, which is why I'm saying, you know, this is the recommendation for now. So come see me September 15th, and it may be different, so.
Okay, well, if there's anything we need to do, because I'm just struggling with why, I know throw this year out, like, why are we having such a hard time getting people to where they need to be?
It's not enough kids on buses. We have big buses and not many, you know, students on them. And so if you, if we have a more normal enrollment into the transportation program, it should alleviate much of it. It's it's the question I have, and I don't know what it's going to turn into, is how much has the workday fundamentally changed with regards to people being able to work from home? So you, you, you know, if that's changed fundamentally and possibly permanently, are we looking now at a more permanent situation where parents are going to drive their children to school? And if that's the case, it does upset the apple cart a little bit, and we are going to have to consider more traffic changes with regards to how things are handled on campus or in town. We would work with the, with our, you know, with our safety officials, you know, the police department on those sorts of things. But, you know, again, it's it's, to try to make, again, try to make a determination during a COVID year, just it's it's a losing proposition.
No, absolutely. I agree. And I and I do see that in myself personally, I drop my kids off down the street and say, puff it, like, I'm not sitting in that ridiculous line. So I'm wondering if we see a push for more students to be walking to school. You know, will that also make a difference in why we're not getting people to where they need to be on time?
Again, it's a volume issue this year, volume of traffic, both on campus, in town, in and around. It's a volume issue. So if if we go back to a more normal society in Holliston anyway, you know, late August into September, we believe that this change in the time will remedy that, will remedy any issues we have with tardiness of the bosses. If 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 we don't have that change back, then we will, again, be back at the drawing board a little bit, so.
Thank you. Minnie?
It's, I'll probably keep it for another time.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
No question is silly or ridiculous, like, this is how you're going to learn, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll come out with it. So do we have any, are we, are we planning another survey to see how it's? to see how it's working out with the Placentino kids, or the parents, or anything?
So the, the issue I have, Minnie, because I, you know, it's, I'm not unwilling to do a survey. My issue is, I don't know how you disaggregate the data from how much kids were traumatized socially, emotionally related to COVID this year, from what is truly an issue with the change in times. That's the hard part I have here, so I think it would be better to wait till getting into next year, when we're hopefully back to a little bit normal. And so maybe by, I don't know, you know, mid-year would be a good time to do that, because I really think we need to be able to separate that data out from what, what was truly all the trauma kids are dealing with from everything else going on from the change in time.
Agreed. Actually, that's a, that's, that's a great point. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so moving on to new business, um, I'm going to have Keith share the screen. I'm just going to have him share the um proposed, if you will, school, school meeting, school committee meeting schedule. Um, this is very um similar to what we have done for as long as I've been on the committee, um, which has been the first and third Thursday of each month, with the exception of September, October, November, and December, where we've met just the once a month. So it's really January, February, March, April, May, and June, where we've had the two meeting, uh, two meetings. And I don't necessarily think we need to vote on this uh tonight. If you want to, um, you know, look at it, check out your schedule for the future, we can vote on it at a later time. But I think um this is sort of the, the groundwork for uh what we could expect for um next year. And feel free to send me anything via email if you don't have any particular questions this evening. Any questions? I don't, Amanda, I can't see you just because the screen is shared. Do you have any questions, or Catherine?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, great. All right, um, and finally, uh, the statement of interest. So a couple of meetings ago, we voted um a very specific vote based on um the MSBA um guideline as to how we need to vote um a statement of interest. So Susan has put together the application. It is actually due um the fifth, is it the fifteenth? It's due sometime.
Twenty-fifth, the twenty-fifth.
And so Susan's going to share with us the presentation that she is going to give to the select board on Monday, this coming Monday evening. So she just wanted to share it with us. If anyone has any questions or comments, um, we can go through that so that we can go to the select board on Monday. Um, as part of this process, the school committee votes um to move forward within SOI, as does the select board. And with that, Susan, if you want to share your screen?
Yes, I will in one second. I, I don't want to belabor the point about graduation, but I did get an update. So I just want to remind people that, I get, from what I understand, their prior, in prior years, when we've had processions, there are two two-hour rehearsals. So that would have to happen somehow tomorrow and Saturday without any communication ever gone out. But the bigger concern with that heat is, is something that I forgot to touch upon, is that we are asking people to arrive, some of them by letter, at twelve thirty-five. So they're going to be different, twelve thirty-five, ceremony starts at two, and now they add on. So it is a significant health risk that is, is a big factor here, and then because of that, where it wasn't planned, logistically, there's really no way to get those rehearsals in to get it to happen, even if we weren't worried about the heat at this point. So I'll just leave it at that, and I'll move on to the statement of interest. Keith, did I get my screen share? Um, do I have the right to share? Thank you. Okay, can everybody see that all right? All right, so I looked at the previous um presentation, so some of it might be a little repetitive from that, but I did try to shorten it quite a bit, and there are a lot of changes from past presentations on the statement of interest. As Stacy mentioned, that the application is due June twenty-fifth, so I have not written the application um yet until we get the approval, and then I'll get that process going with Keith. But just to show you on this current slide here, the high school, the current high school opened at, in nineteen sixty-nine, and then in two thousand and one were the renovations that you see still existing today. And that is fifty-two years since the original building was opened, uh, which is getting significantly aging at this point. It was designed for a different purpose at that time. So this was what the original building looked like in nineteen sixty-nine. And in nineteen ninety-eight to September two thousand and one was when the renovation project was getting started and getting finished. There was infrastructure replacement, facilities were upgraded, cosmetic improvements, other notable aspects at that time to try to make it more current from the original nineteen sixty-nine timeframe. And then over a million dollars for desktoping equipment at the high school with Intel Pentium three processors. Honest to God, I don't think I've heard that name for a long time. When's the last time they were making those? And there were no upgrades at that point to the onsite septic system in Leaching Field. So if you look at these pictures, I took these from the original presentation that Dr. Jackson had shared with you. In nineteen sixty-nine, high school looked something like this. And then it was renovated in nine, in two thousand and one to have much more computer technology in place versus the typewriters that you see in the first picture. And today, we're doing a completely collaborative cooperative learning style that doesn't exist in a, in the old-style buildings that this was made for. So short term, for infrastructure needs, zero to ten years. I asked Mr. Bade to update this list for you, and uh, Mr. Bade, can you speak to it a little bit?
I'm trying to mute, it's tough to unmute in the little window. Um, uh, basically, these are projects that we would put forward, i- you know, in a, in a, and some of these are on our capital improvement plan. This is looking a little longer term, and the reason that we'd be looking, say, eight to ten years is because, you know, I'm not going to say it's our anticipation, but it's our anticipation that we would not necessarily be approved this year. Um, but, again, these are things that would, uh, uh, we would want to see forward, you know, moving forward in a, in a, whether it be a revitalized high school, or even if we're in this still, in, still in this building, you know, things, things like, we're going to have to do the auditorium seating. That's, you know, for example, like the fifth or sixth one down. The, the, for all of you who sat in the auditorium, I mean, that, those seats are from nineteen sixty-nine. In the two thousand and one renovation, they were reupholstered. I mean, that's all that was done there. So that, that's what you're looking at. It's those sorts of things. I mean, the, while we did get a number of new things um in, in the building project, what we didn't get, though, was a new facility. I mean, we had new, no, you know, new paint on the walls, new, new floor tiles. We didn't get new windows, which is that second line item down. You know, the, the windows are all the, are the original single-pane asbestos-caught windows. And I, I mean that, you know, they're single-pane asbestos-caught windows, um, and they are breezy, to say the least. Uh, you know, we, we, while we did get new rooftop units, um, when our, our, our regular contractor who services them, when the maintenance department can't, where there's things that go beyond their skill level, this year, he came in and um, Stan came into my office, and he said, you know, times, times are wasting, and I, I understand that. He says, I'm struggling to get parts. What he does now, because he knows that we're taking, truthfully, he said this, because you guys are taking such good care of the rooftop units throughout our district, he goes and takes parts from ones that are getting decommissioned, stores them for us, when there's similar units, because he can't get parts anymore because they're so old. They weren't meant to last this long, being, again, the rooftop units are on the roof, so they're exposed to the elements three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So th- these are the types of things. So going through, I went through, I just refreshed this. Some projects went up in money, some projects disappeared, like, you know, like, like the turf field. Um, so there, there's pieces that, that have come in and, and other ones that have left, but we'd still be looking at about eleven million dollars worth of, of projects, so.
So just a picture of what Holliston High School looks like today comparatively. And as you know, in two thousand and twenty, the vision of a graduate was put forth by the high school team. The Holliston Public Schools, in partnership with our community, are committed to supporting students on their journey to live healthy, meaningful, and productive lives. Through our pre-K to twelve-plus curriculum and experiences, our students will become engaged, global citizens, innovative thinkers, effective communicators, and lifelong learners who exemplify character and live balanced lives. That's a lot to expect from our students without the effective pieces in place to give them the proper education that they need. Not to say in that we're not doing a good job, and the building has been maintained very nicely. I, in fact, I was surprised about how old it was, just because the, the maintenance crew and team does such a nice job maintaining it, but it just, logistically, doesn't meet the needs of students of two thousand and twenty-one. And I won't read all of these, but just explain the vision of a graduate more. It's a balance of global citizenship, balanced life, lifelong learner, innovative thinker, character, and effective communicator. And that is something that, while that was supposed to be the, the discussion of this and the implementation of this vision of a graduate has been taking place this year, it has obviously moved a lot slower, given COVID and the disruptions to education that have happened. But there is a commitment to moving forward, that we're going to be really moving this and embedding this, and particularly with the strategic planning that's going to be happening starting this fall. This vision of a graduate will be embedded in that strategic planning process as well. Just a few pictures of some innovative high schools that are recently built. You can see that our high school, if you've been in it, looks nothing like this. The spaces are very different, and a lot more spaces for students to flow around. They don't learn in traditional desks situations in these innovative schools, and we need something to get into the future. So is our high school currently meeting the needs of the twenty-first century learner? We have outdated, inflexible science labs and classroom spaces. The building itself is inefficient and needs to be redesigned. One of the things that I know has been discussed with school committee before is the black box theater, having a smaller space for community shows, and also, which we have meeting space for school committee meetings and other events. It's not accessible. We don't have one in this current structure. We just talked about the bus issues. Well, traffic flow right now, we all know that that is very much impacted, particularly with COVID this year, and the way the building is designed, the traffic flow does not allow us to get the buses and cars out of the building in an efficient manager, in efficient manner. The collaboration spaces, like I showed you in some of those innovative schools, they're just not set up to be allowing the smaller settings for students to come and go and meet together to work on technology and projects together. Interior classrooms, um, we have over a dozen, and Keith, do you want to speak to those a little bit, because you know the history of those?
When we had the, the uh onsite tour by MSBA a few years ago, um, you know, I'll say that they were surprised that we were not exaggerating with our discussion of the interior classrooms. All of our science rooms, which are, which all have labs in them, are interior rooms. They do not have any sort of outside windows or anything like that. So as part of the last project, they had to, they had to install individual ventilation units in each of those labs, which, again, it's short, is it properly ventilated for a number of, you know, air, air exchanges, and, you know, per minute, per hour, per day type of thing, sure, but it's still not the best type of learning environment. We, you know, we have special needs programs in, in another, in another interior room. They were just shocked, I'll be honest with you. That was the one thing that shocked them about the design of that space. They, they'd forgotten, because, again, the, the old nineteen sixty-nine California flat, basically one-floor uh design is a late nineteen sixties design for, for a public school, and that's what we have, so.
Thank you. And just really just talking about students needing to engage and interact is just inadequate storage for extra materials and meeting spaces for teachers admin, and students really don't exist, uh, or, or very minimally exist in the current model. And although we have our field house, we still do have insufficient physical education and athletic facilities in order to move into the future needs of our students. So how do we make the high school great again? Just again, nineteen sixty-nine, fifty-two years ago, even with the renovation, we have options to consider. Do we look at that ten-year goal of maybe spending eleven million dollars and not making any changes to high school? Or do we seek to have a comprehensive solution through MSBA and consider continuing to get this SOI in place and also get the building project funded? So some of you will recall, it would start with a feasibility study to investigate all options and possible solutions, how much it would cost, and what would we need to address the deficiencies that we described tonight. That involves an engineering study, which can be costly of the whole building, and also the site. I mean, they would consider traffic flow and all of those things within the building feasibility study. We would have an architect come in and, and that, one that's experienced in school building design and analysis, and there are a number in the state that have done these, many, many high schools have been built over recent years, and there are a lot of projects to compare to and look at as far as architectural designs and engineering. That would also be supplemented with other types of building engineers, landscape archi- architects, and other specialists that would be brought in in this process. And then they would give us a final report, letting the community know all the options and all the costs associated with any of those options. Again, as I mentioned, the Mass- Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, is the partnering group that we would work with. It's funded by the sell, the sales tax of six point two five percent at the state level. That is what funds these projects, and that's why it is able to offset how much the town portion is versus what the state is able to give us. The mission is to collaborate with municipalities, to invest in finding the right-size, most fiscally responsible project. But really, it's about redesigning buildings to show what we need for our, our environment to move forward, to give kids access to equitable programs and global learning programs that allow them to meet the needs of a very diverse educational platform. The minimum state contribution is thirty-one percent, but our reimbursement rate would be fif- forty-eight point five percent, point oh five percent. So that is quite a, a cost savings to the town and the community, if the state was able to give us forty-eight point zero five percent. And that is related to information we received from February twenty nineteen. I have no recent changes to that, so we're going on that assumption that would, it's, would still be at that rate. Again, I'm not going to read this to you. I did share this presentation with you in the um June third folder that Lisa Ronian put together. But this is just the process that we go through. Once we submit the statement of interest, then you go into the eligibility period, and it takes a, a long time to get any type of approval to continue moving forward. And then it would move into the project team, feasibility study, funding the project, construction. Obviously, the town would have to figure out whether they could get a vote to fund the project. So there's a many, many steps, and it's a long process to go through, but right now, we're only trying to do the statement of interest.
And Susan, just if you go back to that slide for one minute, I think the, the key point on this for the new members, um, and I just, I've heard this presentation multiple times, and I know that you changed some of it, but some of it I could probably recite myself. The point of this particular slide, though, is to show where these check marks are. Those are sort of the off-ramps for the, the community to say, okay, yep, no, we're, we're good, we're not going to do this for whatever reason. So I think that's just important to point out that those checkboxes are really the, the off-ramps, if you will. You know, so that by submitting a statement of interest does not mean that we are building a, put an X amount of million dollars. Does not mean that's what we're doing. It means we're looking to partner with the MSBA, and we have multiple times where we get community input, and multiple times where we can decide as a community, no, this doesn't make sense for us. So, sorry for the end.
No, that's, no, that's really good points. It's, it's a long process, and it's also, as you point out, it's subject to funding. Even if we go through this process, it's never moving forward unless the funding comes through, through town meeting approval. So what does a SOI entail? Upside, should have had twenty twenty-one on there. It's, if you look, well, actually, no, I, I did mean to leave twenty twenty. So last year, when we moved the SOI forward to MSBA, I think we, I think Keith updated you, I don't know, somewhere in maybe December or January, we found out that they were not even going to vote on those projects until late April. And it's very competitive, and I just have an update now. At the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one board meeting, only three districts were even invited to the feasibility study at all. The Shelby Regional School District, Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical School District, and Whitman Hansen Regional. So I did include the chart for the number of all of the, uh, there were a hundred sixty one total submissions to the state for statements of interest for even before they get to a feasibility study, and only three of those hundred sixty one projects were approved to move forward, not even approved to necessarily build anything, just approved to continue the process of vetting it.
And Susan, if I can add there too, um, the three districts that you just, um, put up there, two of them look like the Whitman one, but the, um, regional, so you're, I think those are for the high schools, correct? And the high schools are the big projects versus an elementary school that may not be as big. And so that also plays into how many people, uh, how many districts they invite in as well, based on the sizes of the, um, projects.
Yes, I I don't, I didn't have that information on the website, so I can't confirm that for sure, but I I do believe it's the high school. Oh, I shouldn't say that because Whitman Hansen. If I my stepson went to Whitman Hansen, I don't think that high school is very old, so it may not be the high school for at least Whitman Hansen. So the statement of interest involves me, if you approve us to try to consider moving forward, and the select board also proves us to move forward, then I would resubmit the form that has been done in the past, outlining the deficiency of the school building and how this would meet with the priorities of MSBA. These are the different areas that we would want to consider in submitting that application. Do we have a structurally unsound building? Is there severe overcrowding? Are we at the point that we might lose accreditation? Are we concerned about future overcrowding if it's not currently overcrowded? And next would be modernizing the building system to increase energy conservation and or decrease energy costs, which is a huge expense for these, especially these outdated buildings. Are we trying to address some short term enrollment growth? Or is the building no longer providing what we need for full range of programs and really to bring our kids to the twenty first century? So the two that were highlighted in the two thousand and twenty statement of interest are the two that I would like to highlight again should we move forward. And you see them bolded here, modernizing building systems to increase energy conservation and being able to offer more rigorous programs and a full range of programs for our students in future years. Questions about that part?
Quick, quick. Yes, one quick question, Susan, could you, Dr. Cusco, could you put it back? Thank you. The the top one, the structurally unsound. I think you were talking before about a fifty two year old septic system, a fifty two year old septic system that has thousands of people using it. Does that fit into that or is it only building? Is it building and property, especially because the septic system is arguably part of the building? Because we we need to make sure that's still working. I am concerned about the price tag on that and the age of it and how that impacts the field, um, and the, you know, the exterior of the school.
Under current, under, let me just jump in, under current, um, regulations that MSBA has, the wastewater treatment is not part of the project.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, again, the the, so that would not fit that criteria. That would not be an appropriate one for us to select as a problem here. It's still a problem and because at some point wastewater even stills have to be built, but it's not, they don't, that's not, they're not in the business of that.
Okay.
But if we relocated the building, if that was part of the engineering recommendation, then potentially we would need to build that at the same time, right?
We wouldn't pass, actually, anything we did, even if the building was in the same spot. The likelihood is that we would have to put in a wastewater treatment facility anyway. It's something that, again, if we if if Chickenbrook floats a little higher, it's, I mean, part of it's a water table issue that people that know the backfield there know that knows that it gets wet. You know, we've had water in our volleyball sleeves in the past, so it's 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 a damp area and it's not getting any drier, so.
Minnie?
So I just wanted to clear, um, so all the points that you have noted here, we are only concerned with the ones that are bold, right? So we are not dealing with structurally unsound building or severe overcrowding, it says, current. So.
Correct. We're not, we're not putting those as the priorities for what we would put in the statement of interest would be the two areas that are bolded.
Thank you.
So when we do the statement of interest, it's really just stating what the problem is, and it's not solution focused. The solution comes as part of the study of what the potential outcomes could be to solve the problem. If we do this, there is no local cost or obligation to submit it. We have time to change our mind before we do anything more. Right now, we're just being, we're looking to the MSBA to consider us for the future process. It does require the school committee and the select board to vote to authorize me to submit this. And there are two links in the presentation. I won't open them right now. But these are the previous voting, um, updates from last year, so you could read those. And if we vote, um, we would update those as well for the statement of interest process. And June twenty fifth, as I mentioned before, is the date for submission. So just last slide here. About Holliston pride, great schools lead to a great community. We know that people come to Holliston, they move to Holliston because of the programs we have here. They want them to be sustainable for their students. We also offer school choice in many years. And even though we are pausing right now and will reconsider at the June seventeenth meeting, that is another reason people want to come to Holliston for the programs that we offer. So we build a better high school. It supports the community. It supports real estate in the town. It's good for the entire community. And that is it for me tonight.
Thank you. Can you unshare for me, Susan, just so I can see everybody? Okay, so I just want to reiterate, we are not voting tonight. We actually did vote in April or May. Uh, we already did the vote because we got because the the process got moved, um, ahead because of COVID. So like everything this year, we're doing everything differently. Um, so we have already voted to authorize Susan to fill out the, um, statement of interest and to present to the select board. So tonight, more about reviewing the presentation and people asking any other further questions or tips that, you know, other comments that you want Susan to share with the select board.
And thank you for reminding me of that, Stacy. I think I have COVID brain myself.
Well, I, it's been a, it's been a fun year. So, uh, any questions or comments? No? Okay.
Amanda, did I say something? So this is excellent and, um, it's really exciting. This is almost to piggyback on this while we're talking about, um, fixing up things at the high school. Maybe in addition to or in the meantime, could we look at, um, what's going on inside the physical building? And perhaps changes that need to be made that don't relate to the physical building? When I'm hearing things like doesn't meet the needs of the twenty first century students um, or looking at the vision of the graduate and thinking about how we can best make meet that. It sort of makes me wonder what kinds of changes could be made from within. And keep in mind, I'm coming fresh off the campaign trail, so maybe I'm talking about, you know, the feedback I've heard as a candidate for this committee. Um, and I wonder what kind of data we could take from students at the high school, parents at the high school, teachers at the high school to see that in addition to or, um, along with changes to the physical building, do they have, um, problems that the committee ought to address at the high school level? Um, and I'm happy to create such a survey, um, in order to take that data or anything like that. Um, but I'm wondering if, um, a project could be started to go along with the physical changes to the high school to address the internal changes of the high school as well that we could.
Right, because even if we did move forward with the process, it's a long term commitment and it certainly wouldn't happen overnight. One thing I will say, and I think that this will meet the needs of what you're speaking to. Um, I've already spoken with the three, um, consultants that will be doing our strategic planning with us facilitating and putting together dates. I don't want to start too soon. We want to get school open, but maybe late September, early October, we're going to start that process. And exactly what you're describing is what they're going to be doing is meeting with stakeholders. And one of those groups could be students, and they'll be gathering feedback about our programs, about our offerings. So I can certainly make sure that they, that we structure those feedback discussions with our different community stakeholders and students and teachers and administrators and school committee to really focus on some of the things that you're talking about. Because that really, if we build a five year strategic plan that will start the following school year, we look backwards to what we need to get there, so we won't know if we're going to get a a new building in the future, right? So we have to plan regardless, so we will still be moving forward that strategic planning and trying to address those areas in the meantime. And then can, if concurrently, we start to build a new high school, we'll align that with our strategic planning process and or modify the strategic plan if we know that we're moving in a different direction with the high school as well.
Do we also, so our vision of a graduate group, um, was on pause. And Peter, we certainly jump in on this as well because you and I were a part of that group. Um, but we did significant work for over a year and then COVID hit and focuses had to move towards some other things. Um, but I think that a lot of work has already started in that area with feedback from stakeholders. Um, and as Susan showed some of the the, um, the themes of the vision of a graduate. So I think that the work has started. COVID got in our way a little bit. There's a lot more work to be done. Um, but this is quite honestly, an exciting time, as I shared with you and Minnie the other night. You know, an exciting time to be on the committee because there is this, you know, um, I want to say change, but there's lots of discussion about how we're going to move forward. So for sure, you know, your points are are well taken and, um, did I share with you the vision of a graduate link? If I didn't, ping me again and I'll I'll send it to you, Amanda.
Yeah, I have it.
And I have. Definitely the building, the momentum had been building, but as you said, the pause did happen. Nicole Bottomley, our high school principal, certainly was frustrated because the momentum had been building up for this. But certainly COVID took over and they did have to pause. And I think the excitement will be back in the fall to start moving and implementing more of those steps to that process. Peter, did you want to add anything?
I think what you're saying is true. I think the vision of a graduate will dovetail with the strategic plan. And yes, I think the the push next year while kind of getting back to a sense of normalcy will be also continuing to envision what does that look like, that vision of a graduate look like in practical terms at 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 the school level? And how can we capture the pictures that already are happening? And then envision what are kind of next steps in promoting that type of education for kids? And I think the survey process that you're talking about, Amanda, will be an important part of it. So making sure that the strategic surveys, uh, plan surveys and focus groups serve that purpose. But I I agree with Dr. Custer that they should. We can, you can kind of look at those questions and and the way those focus groups are composed to make sure it's it's meeting that purpose as well.
Don?
I just wanted to follow up, Dr. Custer, you said three consultants are working on a strategic plan. Is that something new? Do we, is there consultants that were hired to put together the strategic plan?
We did, I I thought I talked about this, like, forgive me, I thought we talked about it one school committee meeting that we were looking to um, hire our vendor to facilitate that process. So I had met with three different vendors and this, um, sorry, sorry, I'm drawing a blank, Te- Teaching Learning Alliance is the firm. And there were three consultants from that firm that met with actually Mr. Bidet and myself, Dr. Scott Porstel, Dr. Gary Maestis, who helped us with our assistant superintendent's search, and then, um, Dr. Ed Lee as well. So between the three of them, they'd be doing different parts of that process and they'd be, they'd be setting up these focus groups. They'd be coming in and doing multiple nights with the district, getting community feedback, getting stakeholder feedback. And then they would use that feedback to help structure what the next steps would look like to how, as to what we would be putting forward for objectives and goals of the strategic planning process.
Lisa?
We already talked about what the school committee's role is in that. Because I know when we did the last five year strategic plan, I want to say there was a subcommittee. It was Joan and Ann Louise and maybe Andy. I don't remember, but.
So yes, there will be people from the school committee on the strategic planning committee, but the planning committee is is relatively large because it includes different, um, stakeholder groups. So it wasn't just the three of them. It was a whole committee.
Okay, if you'd like, Lisa, I I don't have that the proposal with me, but I could do a brief, um, kind of go over that. Or I could just send you the proposal and you could look at it, what it it kind of outlines. But they're going to really tier it to how we think is best for the for the community and for the district versus they don't give us a canned program. They really, they really address what we think are the priority needs to, um, start moving that process. And it it can vary and we might start moving in one direction and and change and add on to that. They'll do additional meetings with no additional costs within reason. Um, so they're very open to creating a model that works best for our district. So I can absolutely share the proposal with you and or talk briefly to it at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd love to see it. I'm curious. It's, uh, it's interesting. I like that kind of long range planning.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you for that, Susan. So Susan, Keith and I will definitely be at the select board meeting and um, everyone else is welcome to join on Zoom. We, Travis sent us a message tonight saying we should be pretty close to the top of the agenda around seven, seven fifteen ish. And I'll send a reminder via email. Is that evening, seven fifteen? Yes. Okay, thank you. And and finally, for warrants, I signed a war, a school bill warrant in the amount of two hundred forty five thousand, eight hundred twenty three dollars and seventy nine cents. A school bill warrant in the amount of one hundred four thousand, seven hundred five dollars and twenty five cents. And a cafeteria bill, um, in the amount of twenty three thousand, four hundred seventy one dollars and sixteen cents. In your packet I shared with you earlier that you have budget subcommittee meeting minutes, um, as an item, as items of information. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for June seventeenth at seven o'clock. We will have a report from our principals, um, on the year, and it will certainly have the lens of of COVID and, uh, what, you know, they're looking to do this summer, uh, to move us forward. Lisa, if you want to have a newsletter go out, sort of an end of the year, um, newsletter, um, I am reaching out to the HFT so that we can get a list, um, so we can recognize the retirees. And then potentially there might be some preview of summer work or an update on, um, where we are with the hiring of the director of social emotional, uh, learning and equity. Um, and we will rework the committee.
Yeah, if anybody has suggestions for what to put in the newsletter, we haven't done one in a couple of weeks, so this would be really good to have a final one. Um, if anyone has ideas for what they want to go in the newsletter, or better yet, if you want to write a blurb for the newsletter, please email me about that. I want to try and plan it sooner rather than later.
Any other questions? All right, well, it is nine forty two. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Lisa?
By Catherine.
Moved by Lisa, seconded by Catherine, role caller, Ms. Bigelow?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Gupta?
Yes.
Raffi, yes, it is nine forty two. This meeting is now adjourned. Best of luck and congratulations to the graduating class, two thousand and twenty one. Um, we look forward to hearing about your, the next chapter in your lives, so enjoy, be safe, and, um, some of us will see you on Sunday. Good night, everybody.